The October 7th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the start of each council meeting, we have an open podium opportunity for Eden Prairie residents that want to address us on the issue of some city business. Our council meetings are generally the first and third Tuesdays of each month, and the open podium portion of time is from 6:30 to 6:55 here in the council chambers. If you wish to speak, please contact the city manager's office by noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and the subject matter. That phone number is 949-8412. If time permits, we allow unscheduled speakers to address the council, and we did have one scheduled speaker tonight and one unscheduled speaker, so it worked out well. This portion of the meeting, the open podium time, is not recorded or televised. If you have any questions, again, please contact the city manager's office at 949-8412. We have two events tonight under the proclamation and presentation category. Am I going to turn it over to you, Rick, for this, or right away to the chief?
Yeah, we can turn it over to the chief to introduce the items.
Okay. Chief George Espenson, our fire chief, has a presentation of a national award.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. It's my pleasure to introduce State Fire Marshal Bruce West, who's here tonight to present the Fire Department with an award for fire prevention and education efficiency.
Okay. Thank you.
Marshall?
Thank you, George. Thank you. Madam Mayor and council, Bruce West, State Fire Marshal. The National Association of State Fire Marshal Foundation is a group whose mission is to reduce residential fire deaths and injuries. The foundation advocates the use of residential fire sprinklers, smoke alarms, carbon monoxide detectors, and teaching people fire safe behavior. As you can see, George is handing out the information that I'm talking to you about. Attaboy, George. Thank you. The foundation assists fire departments with implementing residential sprinkler smoke alarm programs on a local basis. The foundation's partners include the United States Fire Administration, the National Association of State Fire Marshals, and private industry associations with an interest in and commitment to residential fire safety. The National Association of State Fire Marshals Foundation and Grinnell Mutual Reinsurance Company are pleased to announce the Life Safety Achievement Award for their fire prevention accomplishments in 2013. For over 20 years, this award has nationally recognized fire departments for actively promoting fire prevention in the pursuit of saving lives. To qualify for the award, fire departments recorded zero fire deaths in residential structures or a 10 percent reduction in fire deaths from the previous or prior year. In addition, award recipients documented active and effective fire prevention programs, as well as a commitment to reducing the number of house fires in the community. And as you know, you have a very active fire prevention program with Chief White at the helm of that. More than 1.2 million fires were reported in the United States in 2013, and these fires caused 3,240 civilian deaths, 15,925 civilian injuries, and more than $11.5 billion in property damage, and this is obviously nationwide. To reduce these statistics, this year's award recipients organized educational programs, targeted to specific age and at-risk groups, conducted fire safety inspections, checked and installed free smoke detectors, provided fire extinguisher training, and promoted fire safety messages in a variety of community events. I'd like to thank the Eden Prairie Mayor, thank you, Mayor, city council, city manager, for the opportunity to be here tonight, for your continued support of the Eden Prairie Fire Department. Congratulations on your 2013 Life Safety Achievement Award. Only 11 other fire departments in Minnesota received this award in 2013, and if you flip this over, you'll see at the bottom the list of the 11 throughout the state of Minnesota. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. I'll provide to George and to Becky 2013 Life Safety Achievement Award. This certificate is awarded to the Eden Prairie Fire Department for outstanding efforts on behalf of fire and life safety, and it's dated June 25, 2014. So, thank you very much.
And, Mayor and council, I would also like to, we have an award to present as well. This is a great track record that we have and really wanted to be cherished. When we look around at surrounding communities, almost all of them have had civilian fire fatalities in the last five years, all of our surrounding communities, and Eden Prairie has not had one since the inception of this award 20 years ago and even beyond that. So, that doesn't, part of it is good luck, no doubt, but a lot of it is because of our aggressive fire prevention strategies, your council and past councils adopting very aggressive sprinkler system ordinances for both our businesses and rental properties, and also, if you remember, back in 2006, we passed our rental housing ordinance, which among other things allowed us to really focus on multifamily rental properties. Where previous to 2006, we'd had basically annual large loss fires in those structures. And so, you, with your vision, adopted this ordinance. We assigned one of our fire inspectors to kind of implement that program, Fire Inspector Rick Hammerschmidt, and really, since that program went into effect, we've had virtually zero fire loss in our multifamily residential structures, saving those property owners hundreds of thousands of dollars in lost revenue, and of course, no more displaced hundreds of residents. So, in recognition of that, I'd like Rick Hammerschmidt, Inspector Rick Hammerschmidt, to step forward and receive this certificate of appreciation from the Fire Department for his outstanding work. Just to give you a little order of magnitude, we have over 6,000 properties that we now inspect on a semi-regular basis. We have them prioritized based on the life safety risk, and Rick is the one that implemented all those programs, developed the software strategy to keep track of it, how we're dealing with our residents who are in these rental properties, the licensing kinds of strategies, and all the pieces and parts that go with basically starting a little business up from scratch. So, he's handed it off now. I think he's probably glad to have done that, but he's handed it off to one of our other fire inspectors, but left that program in really great shape. So, thank you all for your support.
Well, great results, and thank you for the hard work that you've done as police chief in planning and directing where we go with our fire safety, and thanks to Rick and the other members of your department that have been really integral to making this all happen. But 2006, when we did that rental housing ordinance, obviously, it's paid off. It's been a good decision, and we appreciate your guidance on that.
Thank you.
Great job, George.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda and other items of business?
So moved.
Second.
Anything to add? I have one thing to add under reports of council members. So, all in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the city council workshop held on Tuesday, September 16?
So moved.
Second.
Any items to correct there? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. I'd like a motion to approve the minutes from the city council meeting held that same date.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections to those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Consent calendar, several items there, anything to pull for discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Move approval of items A through I on the consent calendar.
And that's second. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. We have no public hearings tonight. We just are moving right into payment of claims. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any items to question or get clarified? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Case.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Terrell Lueken.
Aye. Reports of council members. There was one item that I wanted to bring up. I helped out with a fundraiser for Habitat at Emmanuel Lutheran Church the other night, and a gentleman that was also volunteering there asked me about flashing lights, street lights, and I commented, you know, I assume you were talking about the left turn signals, and he said, no, that the communities that he's lived in have always had lights that at about 9 o'clock at night, 10 o'clock at night, all go to flashing. And I said, really? I've never lived in a community where that happened. But I told him that I would bring this up because his point was it decreases idling. It just doesn't impinge the nice even flow of traffic, especially when there's nobody on the street. So, I just wondered if, Mr. Ellis, if you could respond to that, because I said I would bring it up.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I am familiar with some communities that do that. I'd say the state of South Dakota, which is mostly rural, that's very prevalent in that state. Usually, it's after midnight, 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock, when you see it go to a flash. Now, when you look at the state of Minnesota, I would say that's more rare, particularly in the metro area. I don't, I don't know that I've ever seen or heard of an agency that does flash at any time of the day or night, simply because it's just not a practice that people are accustomed to and have implemented. And I think from a consistency standpoint, there's been that decision made at the MINDOT level and the county level not to go to flash. Now, I do know that the Federal Highway Administration, who oversees traffic across the country, has studied this, and they've done a number of case studies where they've shown before and after with respect to using the flash and not using it. Their analysis tends to show about a 30 percent increase in accident rates, and they're the type of accidents that generally cause injuries. They're the right angle collisions. So, I think there's documentation out there that does say, state that it is not quite as safe to operate in flash mode. Now, when you look at our community, we have 80, 87 traffic signals, I believe. I think 79 or 80 of them are either owned and operated by MINDOT or Hennepin County. So, we have very few intersections that are completely within our control that if we wanted to entertain doing that, we could. Rather, I think maybe the best option, if it truly is idling, saving fuel, if that's the predominant request for this, or reducing delay, it might be that we just need to review the traffic signal timing during periods of the night when they might be experiencing that excessive delay. I think that might be maybe a more reasonable approach or a safer approach. So, at this time, I don't know that staff would recommend going to any type of a flashing operation.
Thank you very much for that response. A report of the city manager. We have a lease with Super Value to approve.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have before us a lease for a portion of our city center property here in this building to lease to Super Value. Maybe as a quick overview for the council and for the public, this building that we're in right now, the city center, is not completely occupied by the city. It's somewhat unique in that you'll hear people going to city hall, and many city halls are specifically constructed for a city and wholly vacated or used by a city. But in our case, this wasn't built as a city hall and was a building that we purchased and occupied a few decades ago, in that we own, that we completely own now debt-free, and you may remember that from our discussions with the school district. So, of the 230,000 some square feet that this building has, there, including common space, there's almost 70,000 square feet that's currently available with C.H. Robinson leaving earlier this year. And that's something that we knew in 2013, that C.H. Robinson would be vacating. Good news to the city because they were building in addition to their property in the southwest part of Eden Prairie. So, that was in addition to their building, and they were consolidating their workforce in one space. For us, that meant some space, I mentioned, about 70,000 square feet that became available. We also have another 40,000 square feet that the school district leases as well for community education, and you may remember that we renegotiated and re-solidified that lease for quite a while as well, along with the addition of the TASSL program. But as you know, we've had 70,000 square feet that we have been marketing, and we're coming to you tonight with a lease for 40,513 square feet, but also an option for Super Value to take the remaining 33,000 square feet as well. So, I want to, I want to mention that to you also. So, the entire lease is attached to your packet. The city attorney and city staff and our commercial real estate broker have all spent time working on this lease. And maybe just a quick overview is that the lease would start in March 1st of 2015, and it includes some tenant improvements that the city has set aside dollars for previously that we would put into the building, improvements that Super Value would be directing, but they would be permanent improvements to the building that would be part of the city center building that we own. But again, it's part of the lease. It's a five-year lease, a gross lease that you can see that begins at the $19.25 a square foot rate, which is a very competitive rate within the market. There are operating costs that the city would be responsible within that, but you can see the terms of the lease over the five years included as well. And as I mentioned, we also have the, they have the option within the first six months to take all of the remaining space, and if they do not take the remaining space, they do have one first right of refusal following that. So, we would continue to market the remainder of the space in the meantime to another party, and we felt that this was a very good lease at this time for a company that is in Eden Prairie, is a Fortune 500 company that we're all very familiar with and does business. They've now, as you know, have kind of consolidated their operations into their Valley View campus, when they were at both at one time, the Valley View campus and the campus on the Golden Triangle. They now are fully back in the Valley View campus and in fact have taken out permits to do several million dollars or at least more than $2 million of improvements to their Valley View campus. So, this area, or this 40,000 square feet of our building would be, you know, additional employees as an expansion or an annex to that campus as well. And like I said, we'd hear in the next six months if they would want all the space. So, we're bringing forward that lease for approval tonight. The city attorney and city staff and commercial real estate broker are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Getcho or Mr. Rosso?
How does this compare to?
I'm sorry.
Kathy was next, yep.
Yeah, I had a question of, I take it we didn't have anybody who was interested in the whole space immediately at a similar rental rate?
We did have at least one other entity that was interested in our space, and we did begin discussions on a lease, but they chose to remain in the current building that they're in. So, we were competing against either moving into all the space in city center or staying where they were, and they stayed where they were. We have also had discussions with at least two other businesses that were looking at leasing a portion of the space, and those would be, again, situations where it got to a point where we were discussing proposals going back and forth. I'm sure there were many more tours of our space, but there was at least one business where we got to a proposal point, but they decided to stay. But, to answer your question, we have seen, and I know Mr. McCarthy can speak to this, that the market for 70,000 square foot office users in this building are much, much less than those in the 30,000 to 40,000 square foot range. So, we are comfortable with, even if Super Value did not take the option for the additional 30,000 square feet, there are many businesses more likely within that range that we could lease to, and we're comfortable with, you know, two leases for that space and not just one. We wouldn't want to cut it up into four, five, or six pieces, but we know we could cut it into another piece or maybe even two other pieces.
Councilmember Case.
I was just curious about how does this compare to the rates that C.H. Robinson had been paying at the end of their lease?
So, this, this compares very favorably. So, they were under a net lease, but if you look at what we assume the operating expenses to be, this is at or above where they were when they left, but it's within that range. It's within a dollar a square foot of that range, and then, as you can see, has that 2.5 percent escalator.
Councilmember Aho.
You kind of alluded to it about what we would do with that additional space, but in terms of, if, so if we end up with 33,000 something feet of additional space, if Super Value doesn't take the option to lease the rest of it, what does it look like in terms of breaking that space out, in terms of entrances and things like that? Does it look like we can break it out equally nicely so that it'll be a good usable space for another tenant or two tenants?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question, because a lot, and I think you can see some of this in the exhibits, a lot of our discussion has been about the entrances and the parking and the ability for, if there is another business in that 33,000 square feet to flow in and out, and that's where I talked about it breaking into maybe two or at most three other spaces. But definitely for one, if not two, we've considered all the possibilities with proper parking and ingress and egress and exits, and we might need to build some more demising walls and do some other work, but we've contemplated that.
Good.
Councilmember Wickstrom.
Yes, my question was really about the improvements and then also the parking. What percentage of parking is included compared to the parking spaces that are available overall?
So, if you think about the, this, when C.H. Robinson was here and the spaces that they occupied and the 70,000 square feet covered, you know, most of which is, a lot of which is out front of city hall, outside of the visitor parking, and then all the spaces as you work down to the fire station. So, we have ample parking for both Super Value and the next tenant, but this parking that we've designated for them in the lease would be that area that is next to community ed and near the fire station, and then some of the spaces that go from the fire station to the natural barrier that you see out front with the trees and the median, some of, I would say 60 to 70 percent of that space is for Super Value. So, whether they, whatever the next tenant is, Super Value or not, they would take the remainder of some of that space that is west of the median over there and some of the space here, but we've, again, we've contemplated the amount of spaces that would be necessary for that office use.
And there wouldn't be a conflict, for example. I know that the facility is rented for weddings and other events, but there would be no conflict because generally, those folks would be gone by then anyway.
That's right, Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom. That's exactly it, that we do have a garden room, and we have meeting rooms in here, heritage rooms, other rooms, and the Super Value is planning on it being more of a daytime office operation. Some employees may work some evenings and some Saturdays. For the most part, you're right on. It's a, it's a pretty empty parking lot on weekends and evenings, and that would continue to be the case.
Any other questions? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I would move to approve a new lease between the city of Eden Prairie and Super Value Inc. for the space at Eden Prairie City Center property located at 8100 Mitchell Road.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Glad to have that taken care of.
Me too.
That's been the top of the pile for quite some time, so great job. On the next item is the Riley-Purgatory-Bluff Creek watershed district rules. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and council. You may recall at, I believe it was the September 2nd meeting, council asked that staff do some research into rulemaking and issues surrounding Riley-Purgatory-Bluff Creek watershed district, and at the September 16th meeting, there was a memorandum from the city attorney, a discussion from the city attorney on rulemaking authority from the watershed district. There was also a memorandum from the Public Works Director on the status of the rules. And basically, at, at this meeting, there isn't any attachments in the packet, but we thought it would be best to keep you informed on continued progress with a verbal update and a verbal report of where we're at, and also maybe an opportunity to address some of the items that the, the, the new organization that introduced themselves to you at the last meeting had brought up, the Southwest Metro Lakes Coalition, had also sent you originally, I think it was an email and a position paper back in, at the end of September, and again, followed that up, I think, this week with, with some of the similar concerns we've been talking about related to the watershed district rulemaking authority. I do note that the opinion of the, of the city attorney that we could go over again briefly still is the same, you know, in terms of the, the opinion that the watershed does have the authority to make rules, but then the city has some ability or opportunity to, you know, have their own authority through their own ordinances possibly supersede that, and there's kind of a lot that goes with that. However, and this is where we'd, we'd appreciate some feedback, for the last year-plus, the city staff has been working with the watershed staff by commenting on the rules, by being present at the open houses and the workshops, by testifying on the rules, of many of the concerns that, that we've brought up previously, and our Public Works Director is going to give an update on that as well. So, it would be good as, as we provide an update to you on, on the status of those discussions and the idea that we're looking for a coherent set of rules citywide, because we also have two other watershed districts in our city, that you still want us to continue to head in that direction and to work toward something that both the watershed and the city could agree with would also be helpful to get that feedback. Understanding that the watershed, I do not believe, intends to take action on their rules until November, so we still do have another council meeting to come back and provide you with a further update. So, with that, I can turn it over to the Public Works Director, and he can give you an update since the meeting three weeks ago on where we're at with the rules. And I think the other thing, if I remember the last meeting as well, several council members had asked questions about whether it's Nine Mile's rules or Riley's current proposed rules. What does that mean for a business? What does that mean for a single-family home? What does that mean for a single-family home that might be doing a porch addition or might be doing some landscaping? You know, to what degree are we, are these rules, not we, are the rules possibly affecting our residents? So, we want to provide more examples of that for you as well, so you can have a feel for if there are any rules at all or the form of the rules, how, how that affects us. And that also includes the current rules that are in place with Nine Mile. You know, that in some form or another have been in place since, I believe, 1973. I think there was an update by their rules in 2008, but they have had rules in place for quite a long time.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Maybe just to take a little bit of a step back or 30,000-foot level, there are about 46 watershed districts in the state of Minnesota. When we look at how many of those have rules permitting, I would say the majority of them do have rules of some form or fashion. Now, when you look a little bit closer at the metro area, I would say I'm not aware of any watershed district that doesn't have rules or issue some type of permit based on those rules. So, it's very common for a watershed district to have rules similar to what Riley-Purgatory is proposing. When you take maybe a little bit closer look at the two watershed districts that we work most closely with, that'd be Nine Mile and Riley-Purgatory. Rick mentioned that in 1973 is when the Nine Mile Creek watershed district first established their rules and started doing the permitting, and I don't know the exact year Riley did, but it was around that same timeframe. So, something that's been in place for decades, really, and much of our city has been built on these types of watershed district rules. But something happened in 2007. Those two watershed districts went in different directions. Nine Mile had to update their watershed management plan as they're required, and all other watershed districts are required by law to do from time to time. So, they relooked their rules and they made some revisions. At the same time, Riley-Purgatory watershed district also did, but they decided to suspend their rules. So, they used to have rules, they used to do permitting, but in 2007, they decided not to. They were going to allow the city to be that agent. So, the next step, the city was city was required to update our local watershed management plan, because we had to be in conformance with the two watershed districts that just changed their plans. That's a requirement. So, we did that in 2007, and in 2008, City Council approved that local watershed management plan. And in that, it was detailed that Nine Mile Creek Watershed District would continue to be the regulating authority and issue permits for their part of our community, and the city would take over the Riley Purgatory Creek Watershed District area. So, that's just a little bit of a history of, history up until 2008. So, today, as you know, Riley Purgatory is interested in taking back or restarting that regulatory program. So, as we've worked with them to try to develop the rules, I think our number-one priority was consistency with Nine Mile Creek. You've heard me say that. In March, June, a number of occasions, I've mentioned that we went into this thinking that was our primary goal. So, some of the comments that have been made of, you know, having confusion with two different sets of rules, two different watershed districts. I think that as we have worked with the Riley Purgatory, we've tried very hard to try to have some parity, have a plane of equity across our community where the rules would be similar. And I think that they've listened to us. I think that they, city or district staff members recognize how important that is to our city, and I suspect that they will be bringing forward some changes to their rules that will provide that parity. I think that I would even go so far as to say they're make, staff members are considering making changes to the rules. It'd be improvement over Nine Mile Creek Watershed District. So, I think that we have done some good work in discussing with them over the past several months, changes that could be made. Another comment that I wanted to make is that one of our big concerns was all of the assets that we have that are close to regulated features. We have a lot of parks, trails, roads that are adjacent to lakes, creeks, rivers, well, maybe not so much rivers, but wetlands and ponds, so regulated features. We're very concerned about our ability to maintain those assets in the future, because the rules kind of barred us from doing that, the proposed rules did. I think that we're hearing from staff members from the watershed district that there's some flexibility to that. Maybe some amendments could be made to the rules that would protect those facilities, allow them to be maintained. I'm talking things like canoe racks, beaches, the types of facilities that you would see close to natural features. So, I think that's a positive that we've seen in the last couple of weeks. Another comment that I've heard is that, how will this impact our MS4 permit? That's the permit that we hold as a city that gives us the authority to discharge our stormwater into waters of the state. It's a very powerful tool that the state holds over us to make sure that we're doing the right thing with respect to the environment and removing pollutants to the best of our ability before it's discharged. I think these rules probably complement that. I certainly don't believe that they hurt our ability to do that. So, I think that these are positive things that, quite honestly, would probably be at some point in time required for our MS4 permit. So, I don't see any conflict with that. So, those are just a few items that we've been discussing with the watershed district and trying to communicate to them our concerns. I think we're having good conversations, and I think progress is being made. I also wanted to spend just a couple of minutes to explain for existing single-family houses. What does that mean? What is this trigger? What exactly is a trigger, and what does it mean? The requirement, generally speaking, and I can't speak for every rules, because there's a number of rules, but the one that you probably hear the most concern about is for stormwater requirements. And that has a trigger of either 5,000 square feet of area being disturbed. And to put that into perspective, that would be an average-sized lot in Eden Prairie, essentially completely redoing their landscaping. That's about what 5,000 square feet would be. So, it would have to be a pretty sizable landscaping project. The other trigger would be 50 cubic yards of soil being removed. That would be equivalent of roughly, maybe a 20 by 20 addition to your house, digging down three feet for foundation. So, those are the two types of projects that would trigger a permit from the watershed district. And for stormwater, what that would mean, if you were a Nine Mile Creek Watershed District, is that you'd have to put in some type of feature to manage your stormwater runoff and clean it. The rules that are currently being discussed with the staff of the Riley Purgatory Watershed District would be not quite as onerous, I believe, as that. It would require that you put some in, in some type of a BMP. That could be rain barrels, could be box rain gardens. It could be something that I think is fairly manageable. So, again, just, I wanted to put that in perspective, what it would mean for existing single-family homeowners. I think that's about it that I had, Rick.
So, just, you know, in summary, you know, there's been, as I mentioned at the last meeting, there's kind of varying degrees of issues. You know, one of the issues is, you know, proposed rules that concerned the city, because they were what we would consider above and beyond what Nine Mile Creek's rules are and have been. And as Robert said, the comments that you looked at and voted on with the Riley rules in March really mirrored, you know, in a, kind of a quick summary, issues with the rules that are beyond Nine Mile. That being said, there have been communication and concern with the ability of any rules at all. And so, that's a discussion that if we, if you had wanted us to go down the path of not cooperating with any rules at all, I think we'd want to have a little bit more of a discussion with the city attorney about what that means and what effect that would have. And I know there's, there's just a discussion about the statute, how you would read the statute, and issues related to that. And there is quite a possibility, and it's a road that, you know, at the last council meeting, we were discussing, that if the rules that Riley's bringing forward do not line up well with Nine Mile, that's an option that you, as a council, would be, you know, considering. Do you, you know, how you accept those or not accept those. But I guess, you know, the feedback that we'd eventually want is, under any way, shape, or form, are those rules that you would accept in how we work with the watershed district? And we don't have to make any decisions anytime soon, but the direction would be helpful.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Ellis, for that review of the issue and the illustrations, specifically about what it means for a homeowner. Again, it wouldn't mean you can't make more than a 20 by 20 addition to your house. It's just that that would trigger some changes in the way handling stormwater. So, really, what Mr. Getcho wants now is kind of guidance from us, whether or not we have any appetite for going with no rules at all, because obviously, staff is investing a lot of time in trying to negotiate some rules and get some modifications to the rules, get some consistency with Nine Mile rules. So, if, if we're thinking that we might be going a totally different direction on this, let's let them know now, so that they don't do tons of work on it, and then come to us, and we reject it. Councilmember Nelson.
Well, I had a question for Mr. Ellis that I wanted clarified first. When you said it would come in if, say, you put on a 20 by 20 addition, is this only on property that goes immediately to a wetland, or a creek, or a lake? Or does this apply to somebody, say, who's across the street from a wetland, or a stream where you've got city stormwater runoff already in place, where they don't, their land is never going to drain onto that wetland, because there is a public street in between? How, you know, so is it just distance, or is it, if it's only contiguous?
Councilmember Nelson, there are several rules within what's being proposed at Riley Purgatory. So, to clarify it, there's stormwater rules. What triggers when you have to make stormwater improvements to your property? So, I illustrated the re-landscaping the yard or doing the 20 by 20-foot addition. If you're doing that, it would trigger a permit to do some type of a stormwater BMP on your property. I discussed rain gardens, or, you know, there's a whole handbook full of things that you would have as an option. There are other rules that are buffers, be separate from stormwater. So, if you had a lake, a creek, a wetland on your property, and you were doing an addition that would trigger the rule, then you may be required to put a buffer on your property as well. And I might, I might look to the watershed district to clarify that one, because I think there might be some changes that are, if they're willing.
Sure.
If you go to buffers for single-family homes, what we're really looking at is wetland and creeks, so not lakes. You would have to be disturbing up gradient. So, if you have a disturbance, and your runoff is going towards creek or wetland, that is within the buffer area, then you would be required, you would have to trigger a rule before you get into the buffer rule. So, there's other suites of rules that we have.
But my question is, is this for property that is immediately adjacent to one, or does it also apply to the property that's across the street from one?
So, just to answer, it's going to be a weird answer, because, you know, I don't know the whole case scenario for it and what you're doing on the property, but let's say you are triggering the rule.
Say you're adding a 21 by 21 addition to your home.
Okay. So, you triggered the stormwater rule, and now, you're triggering the buffer rule. If, if you have a street, so our buffer width is 20 feet, right, for a single-family home, existing single-family home near a wetland or, or a creek. So, when you think of your street width, they're greater than 20 feet. So, if you're on the other side of the street, and the wetland is on the opposite side, you will most likely not trigger the buffer rule, because the edge of the wetland and the 20 feet is in the street.
All right.
So, does that?
Is it ever greater than 20, a street width? Because most homes, you know, may only have 15 feet between their house and the street, you know. Some of our most common zoning ordinances have 15 feet on a side.
So, the buffer is, you know, calculated from the edge of the wetland plus 20 feet. So, if you have a road, that's where the buffer would be.
So, it's never 30 or 40 feet away?
Not for existing single-family home, no 20 feet. So...
Okay. That makes a difference.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments, where we should go with this?
Yeah, no, I assume we can still have beaches, right? You were talking about canoe racks, you know, lifeguard towers, I assume, and beaches. That's not going to be, go away, or...
No, no.
That would be a major change, obviously, so...
No, Councilmember...
Certainly, we want to protect our wetlands, and we want to protect our streams. I think Eden Prairie's always tried to do an extremely good job of that, so...
Councilmember Aho.
So, you mentioned that we had currently, we're currently living under a set of rules from one watershed, and now, we're looking at really implementing new rules from another watershed. So, as long as the two rule sets are in somewhat alignment, I mean, that would, that would kind of give us consistency across, across both watersheds and across the entire city, with the exception of the third watershed, which really doesn't really impact our building and development much, because it's along the river. So, to me, I mean, seems like we're looking at just kind of making it consistent. So, I don't have too much trouble with that, if that's what you're, if that's what you're saying.
Yes, I am. I'm saying that that was our goal when we set out with this. I think there's been a lot of discussion to get us there. There are maybe three areas that I would say are a little bit different than Nine Mile, but I think they're reasonable, and I think they might be good ideas. And they are high-risk erosion areas. And I'll point to Burr Ridge to say that would have been very helpful. There are also groundwater appropriations. We know what's going on in White Bear Lake, and you've heard about groundwater. Just getting a better handle on tracking that. So, that'd be a new requirement, tracking groundwater appropriations. I think that's a good thing to do. The other one would be protection of our streams. Right now, we don't have buffers on streams. This would be something that would be added to that. And they're modest, they're 20-foot buffers, but I think those have, they're ripe for erosion. When we have the big storm events, like we did this June, keeping structures and keeping native plants within close proximity of those stream banks is the best thing you can do to salvage that stream bank. Those would be the three primary areas that are different. There are areas that I think they're making improvements on, that I would like to, if these, you know, if at the end of the day, these rules end up getting adopted, I'd like to approach Nine Mile Creek and try to convince them to make these changes to their rules, because I think, I think they're a benefit to the city and to property owners. So, I think we're getting a little, a little bit of both. We're getting some things that we don't have protections on that we should, and we're improving some protections that are currently in place.
So, what I'm hearing you say, Robert, is that you're, you've made quite a bit of progress in terms of the talks with the watershed district in getting some more, a better, closer alignment with current, current regulations, current rules. That's, that's good to hear. I'm glad that you report that. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Oh, gee, oh, sorry.
Councilmember Case.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think anyone on the council's ever pushed the idea that we don't want rules, nor that we don't want a watershed. I mean, I think we've been very positive about watershed districts exist for the reason of continuity between jurisdictions, that, you know, how does Minnetonka Dean Prairie's rules relate? So, you invent a watershed district, or Chanhasan, to help coordinate that. So, I don't think we've ever had issues with that. I think, I think where we've started to sense from many of our residents in the city, some issue with, they, I'm not sure they've been clearly vetted. I don't know that at times, in the beginning, maybe they were more onerous, and things have tweaked, been tweaked and evolved and badly communicated. I feel like this, much of what's happened is not about the content, but about the process. And I don't feel that the watershed district, the Riley watershed district adequately pulled in to the process some of the people that are most impacted, lake users, lake owners. Today is the first time I've heard from Claire the idea that the buffer doesn't impact lake front owners. I mean, that's astounding to me, if that's what's being said. That was brand-new. And so, that's a, that's a change, an evolving change that is a huge deal, that, you know, I don't know how that gets communicated out to the public. I almost feel like, I definitely want Eden Prairie's staff to work with the watershed district to make sure that the rules are the best for everyone. I mean, the water quality, for the residents, for the lake owners, for the people that use the lakes, for the people that live along creeks, just all of us benefit when our water quality is great. I just don't feel comfortable tonight, this almost feels too glossed over. We had a big kind of blow-up thing where we got a lot of feedback suddenly, and tonight, we're hearing, no, it's okay. Everything's okay. I don't feel comfortable that everything's just okay. And I almost feel like, I'd like some kind of a, before we move on this, or if we can put it off even into the new year, but a public hearing, I want that chance to hear what, what, we've heard it informally, many of us have met with various pockets of residents, but I'd like to have a formal, where, since we are, they're representatives, not the watershed district, they're not elected, we are. So, I'd like to hear from our residents on all sides of this entire issue, what are the impacts here, and is this the right way to go? And, and then, I'd feel more comfortable, you know, saying to staff, absolutely, we're on the right track. It almost feels like, from what Robert was saying, that we just ought to have them, again, I'm not sure I know enough to say this for sure, but just mirror Nine Mile and go with it. Just take Nine Mile's rules and go with it. I mean, if there's, if they're, if not, then we're going to have two sets of rules. And I'm not sure that what I'm exactly hearing from you, while we're getting close, or we're basically in sync, but what does that mean? So, I'm not comfortable tonight. I definitely want to say to staff, yes, sit at that table, continue working. We want the watershed district to be a player in this. We may want that to be their rules, you know, as long as we're making sure that they protected our people, the people we represent, our residents, of all sides of whatever, if this issue has many sides to it. So, I don't know. I'm feeling, I don't know if we have time in this process for some type of a public hearing that's thrown in, but I just feel like if we had a couple hours of listening to people on all sides come and tell us, what are the impacts of these rules, so we understand it, and then we can clear, more clearly direct staff to absolutely go down this path.
Maybe just, I can respond to a couple comments. So, tonight was, again, an update, and to maybe get some feedback from the council, so there isn't any decision point necessarily right now. And, and quite frankly, in terms of what the city council or the... And quite frankly, in terms of what the city council or the city may do, it could be in a month, it could be in two months, it could be four months, because the city is not enacting these rules and the city council's not voting on the rules. It's a matter of what reaction you take to the rules that you don't necessarily need to do at the next meeting or the meeting after that. So we could talk about some type of process to get feedback from the entire city about the rules of all three watersheds in our community, how that impacts us, what people's feelings are. We can certainly do that. And then this process, let's say, for instance, the, the Riley does vote on rules in November, the city then, we are then triggered at some point to take action, to update our local water management plan, and that's where we reach some decision points on if, what we feel about that plan matching the other rules.
Can we all the cart off that?
You know, I.
I don't mean to get into great detail, but I mean, if there's a couple that are just not what we want, and yet 90% are like Nine Mile, can we say, because we're the, I mean, what I heard from Rick is that we, as a city council, because we have rules, we supersede the watershed district rules. So is that, did I say that fairly accurately?
In a nutshell, I think what gets.
If that's the case, can we pick and choose if there were two or three that, that are not serving our purposes or not doing what we want them to do? Are we able at that point, or is it all or nothing, and is it too late at that point? Or is there an advantage to having the watershed district slow down so that we feel more comfortable about the political? I, I feel like they're, I feel like they're not paying attention to the political aspect to this. And, and politics in a very good sense, politics is people, and all the different perceptions and perspectives, I just feel like that's not been cared for in this non-elected process. And that's what our job is, is to, to do that. And I want to protect that process a little bit.
And I, and I think we would just have to take some time to research that a little bit about, you know, how close the rules are and what our feeling is with our plan, but we can come back to you with an answer. And then I do think that, you mentioned the lake buffers, councilmember Case, that even though, again, it wasn't the city's public process for whether it was open houses or meetings or public hearings that the watershed had, but we did have staff present. I know councilmembers were present at, at some of these as well. And it is our understanding that the lake buffers were removed as a response to the concerns of the residents. So there's concerns that the city has, you know, the council, the city staff, that, you know, us collectively have, and concerns that residents have. So I think that was what the removal of the lake buffers was a reaction to.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Aho, you had something else to say?
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to follow up. I, I think that we didn't, you know, I was just asking a question before. I did want to weigh in on, you know, what we should do as a process. I think we all need to do that if we haven't done that yet. But my, my thoughts are, I think that we do need to work with the watershed to try to develop a plan that, that meets our residents' needs, meets our city's needs, and meets everyone's needs, and gives consistency across the city. And so therefore, you know, matching each watershed, I think, is, is important. But I do, I do want staff to continue to, to move forward and, and try to come to resolution. And I am pleased to hear that the watershed seems like they are listening and that, you know, that they are open to making changes and that we are moving forward with that process. Now, at the end of that process, that's when, that's when our decision point comes, when, once they've made those decisions, once they've enacted their rules, that's when we have to have a decision point of, are we gonna adopt these rules or how are we gonna move forward? But I would say it's in everyone's best interest for us to work under the rules and, and work with them and have a mutually agreeable working relationship together.
Right, I agree. All right, anything else on this? Okay, then we're moving on to the next item, which is a report from the park and rec director, exciting development in our park.
Yes, Your Honor, councilmembers, we have been working now for a couple months with the organization Ice Castles LLC. And what they do is, and they have a good track record throughout the northern part of the country, I have to be careful that I don't say throughout the country because it needs to be able to freeze. And in Colorado, New Hampshire, Utah, and also as recently as the Mall of America in Bloomington, they have built ice structures. And the name Ice Castles, to me, is I made an assumption that it might look like a real castle, like Disney World type of castle, is not the case. It's an ice structure, a sculpture that you can walk through like it was a castle, but maybe more of a natural cavern feel to it. And so during the day, the way that it's crystallized and constructed, the methods allow for some of the, the colors from the sun and the light and prisms look from the inside. And then at night, it's also lit with different colored lights to have that experience. The history has been that this becomes a regional attraction. And so there are people that come here and, and create an economic impact. So that's one of the thoughts of why would we be interested in, in forming an agreement like is before you tonight, is that we believe that it could be very good for some of our local businesses, whether it's the gas stations, the coffee shops, the restaurants. We also look at a park that in the wintertime mostly sits empty, with the exception of the skating rink. And so as we started meeting with them and talking about what would it take to have an amenity like this in the wintertime in our community, Miller Park is what came to mind. And we really put together a group of city staff, Mr. Ellis, Mr. Lindahl, myself, Stu Fox, got together, did some site visits with them and talked about what would be some of the impacts to the infrastructure, because first and foremost, we wanted to make sure that that was cared for. Would it be safe in the park? From a building code standpoint, we brought in our building inspector, discussions with colleagues in Bloomington, where they had had the experience at the Mall of America site. Also, from a traffic standpoint, Chief Reynolds and police staff had been able to look into that with Bloomington and think about, are there impacts to our potential traffic patterns of having an amenity of this type of attraction? We really came to the conclusion that, to our best research and what we see happening on our site, we think it is something that can work. They've told us that if it works well, they would like to do this for multiple years. What's before you tonight is a one-year agreement because we certainly would want to step back and say, did it work the way that we believe that it will work out? They basically, as they showed us, it's almost like a small irrigation system with small pipes in many different places. And so they began to form things using not, almost a, not a drip of water, but water that trickles upwards. And that's how this ends up getting formed. And so every one of them is unique. They do treatments to the flooring, to the ice, with more of a grinder, so that is a little bit more adhering to people being able to walk and navigate through. There are sections of it that are handicap accessible, certainly working with Mr. Rosso and his firm to make sure that in the agreement, compliance with all state laws, compliance with health code, if they will be serving any type of refreshments or food, all of that would be adhered to under our, our state law and city ordinances. So we really see, again, that it is a, it is a group with a proven track record. We thank Miller Park, which on a regular basis, in the spring, summer, fall, accommodates some really large weekend tournaments. But also, when you think of this being spread over, some of the estimates of 50,000 to 70,000 people visiting the site is spread over about a three to three and a half month period of time, seven days a week, different hours during the weekdays, two to 10-ish during the weekdays, and then on the weekends, more of a noon to 10 o'clock as well. So it helps spread out some of that traffic, the way that you can pull through, drive through Miller Park, the parking accommodations, we think that that would all suffice and be able to handle this type of an amenity. So you have the, more of the details of the agreement before you. If you have other questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Mr. Latimer, I have a few questions. The first one that came to mind is, are there water charges? And I understand that the water charges have been incorporated into the monthly fee that they will be paying us. So that one was answered. Tell me about, a little bit about the lighting that is on this and whether or not it's low enough that it's not gonna disturb neighbors? And then I had a question on signage because, and I brought this up with Mr. Getcho, but the agreement says, user may place signage on and off the premises, advertising its activities on the premises. All signage must be in compliance with the city code and ordinances and be approved by the city in advance. So does, does that wording protect us from having signs all around our community, little temporary signs that say, you know, this way to the Ice Castle with arrows, that type of thing? Also, then, the last thing, it's more of a comment, are there some things that we can do with our park and rec programming in Miller Park this winter that would kind of be a good synergy with this Ice Castle?
Yeah, so the signs, and I can certainly let Mr. Rosso ring in, but our intent there is that they follow all of our current sign regulations that exist in the city, which are fairly restrictive. So you're used to us, maybe at the entrance of Miller Park, we have the signs for the art crawl or the, the ones that change out quite a bit. That could be a location, but otherwise, they would have to follow all other sign codes and ordinances that exist for any other business that operates out there, which, which is pretty restrictive. I will say, though, that social media is really what is a, a large driver for them. And that, the social media ends up to be some national coverage as well. So that's really what they play on versus as much of the printed material. It's more of the social media that tends to draw people to the site, and that's a big part of their marketing effort. In terms of the lights, as, as I've seen it, and if we go back, if they can zoom in on the document camera, I think it'll show some examples, but most of the lighting is actually internal and doesn't take a lot of lighting in order to get the effects of the different hues amongst the, the ice. If you think about the location of Miller Park and you're facing the play area and the splash pad, the area being used is immediate to the right of that, and it's kind of in a wooded, there's some, and it makes the site somewhat unique, is that it's within some of the trees and really separates it from any of the sightlines of any of the houses. Versus some of our softball tournaments, when we have the lights on there in somebody's backyard directly, this is, it might have some glow. If you're on the other side of the lake, you might be able to see a glow through the trees, but after that, it's not a, I don't see it as something that is any more of a lighting impact, quite less than what a softball field would be.
Okay, and then park programming?
Yeah, so we were, we were just talking, well, we started talking a couple weeks ago, that if this were to happen, we have some programs, Rock on Ice is one, that's usually at Miller Park, where we bring in a DJ and do some other smores and a bonfire by the rink. And we're talking about what could some of those other ideas be, that while we would have an amenity like this at that park, what else with some of those winter festival event fields could we put together to, to also leverage this?
Mr. Rosso, did you have your light on? It didn't register here, so.
I didn't hear you.
Okay, now it did, thank you.
With respect to the provision about signage, this is the city acting primarily in its capacity as a landlord and saying to the tenant, you can put signs on the premises they're leasing to you, and you can put signs elsewhere. This is not just an Eden Prairie attraction, this would be a regional attraction. So if there's another community out there that allows off-premise signs, we're saying you can attract people from other communities by, by doing that. The next sentence says you have to comply with all city codes. City of Eden Prairie does not allow off-premise signs within the city of Eden Prairie. So it's allowing them as a landlord to say you can advertise regionally for this, and we expect to have large numbers of people coming from all, you know, the entire metropolitan area. But with respect to the city itself, you're limited to our codes with what you can do on signs, which is no off-premise signs.
Okay, great, thank you. Councilmember Aho?
I guess my questions are more related to impacts. So, you know, as I see this, it looks like a great project and everything, but I also see that there could be some impacts. What are the impacts to our, our park, our park, our physical park in terms of, you know, if you're building a structure like this, you know, obviously, it's gonna, it's gonna have some impact on the ground that it's on. What kind of ground is it on? Is it on manicured turf or is it on, you know, just woods in the, in between trees? What about the additional load of the, you know, the people visiting the place? You know, what do we impact, do we see that on the park? And then also, in terms of other costs that we might incur as a result of this? So, you know, security costs through our police department, et cetera. Have we taken all of those aspects into consideration when looking at, you know, the cost that we're, we're looking at for, you know, leasing this space?
So when we think about some of our known costs, like plowing, we plow those roads, it's a, it's a city street, so that's normally plowed as a part of any snowfall or, or city snow event. We would then plow through that parking lot as we were plowing through the road too. Or at some point after that plowing event, we would come back and, and do the plowing of the actual parking lot. So there's a little bit of manpower and cost of time, although we have the equipment, we're in most cases already there or going through to push at least some of it through and come back a little bit later to be able to do that. All of the, like the electrical, there are some upgrades that they would make at their cost to the electrical supply that we have. Those are things that they are aware of from the site visit. In terms of the, the site itself, it is on mowed bluegrass, not irrigated. What we've been told from the other sites is that minimal damage to the turf, although we do have a substantial damage deposit in place if we do need to go back in and add some seed or sod in some places, that's, we, we took that into consideration to make sure that if there was some damage. Otherwise, it's, you know, the impact to the park is people driving on the roads, driving through. Chief Reynolds, his interaction with the city of Bloomington in terms of any, you know, security type issues were, were really non-existent. And I would think any, you know, traffic, in a lot of cases for us, the more traffic we can get into a park, the less chance of vandalism, the more good eyes are on the park. So although we haven't had much issues in Miller Park before, but, so, don't really see any, you know, downsides of the use of it. Certainly brings some more people to town, and there will be more people going through the park area.
Okay, good, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
You know, there's some things, I've had some calls over the summer from people utilizing Miller Park that have complained that there are too few porta-potties and those that we have are overused and not suitable for young children. How are we going to make sure that, you know, with lots of people coming at one time, are we going to add additionally to our facilities for that? Are they providing that? How is that side of things going to work? Because certainly, the one porta potty we have in that area is not going to be enough.
So starting not too, a couple weeks ago, we started pulling some of the, what we put out as portable toilets, we started pulling those out of the park, getting ready for the winter season. It would be their full responsibility to bring back the portable toilets necessary and have the appropriate number of cleans happen to service the users at, at this type of an event. I think being that it's winter, we don't, towards fall and, and early spring, we don't see as much use in the portable toilets. We do have toilets that would be open and available over at the rink, but I think we're gonna see most of that used from the people that use the skating rinks, it's just, it's too far separated. So it would all be done with their expense, using portable toilets to service it.
Is there any downside to our new playground that's there for heavy use from kids in the winter over what it might normally have? As I assume, having that playground adjacent to it is also going to be a, a big pull for any families coming through.
It could, I mean, it could have some use. Our play structures do get used in the wintertime, and we don't see any, you know, damage due to it being used when it's cold versus when it's warm. I think any use that happens on them is pretty light just due to the temperatures, but.
I would expect it would be a lot heavier, though, at certain times with lots of families using this, and unless it was super cold out. But it's, it's suitable material and everything for have normal summer use in the wintertime.
Not normal summer use, because no water feature.
Well, yeah, no water feature, but in a, a typical number of kids sliding and swinging and going across the bridges and stuff.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I would move to, turn it on. I would move to authorize entering into a use agreement with Ice Castles LLC to provide an Ice Castle attraction at Miller Park.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Brings us to the end of our agenda. Is there any other business to bring before the council? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move. Second.
Meeting adjourned.